The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd ask Teri Grant from the Father's Heart Ministry, which has recently moved into Oregon City from Clackamas, to come up and talk a bit about the services that ministry provides, if you would. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. Thank you so much for having me. Yes, my name is Teri Gant and I am the founder and director of the Father's Heart Street Ministry. And we've just recently moved into Oregon City and we're excited to be here. We're excited to be a part of the community because it's our job and our intention and our desire to work hand in hand with the community, to work together and to be an asset to the community. And what we provide, we're a faith-based social service organization and we help those that fall at or below the poverty level. So that means that we help a lot of homeless people as well. And what that means is it's much more than what people think as far as a homeless person. Yes, it's that person on the street corner that you all see, but it's also families living in vehicles, senior citizens living in vehicles, our veterans, some of them that have fallen in the cracks, that we try to round up and help. We have the VAS program that comes in and helps and we've had like about three of them so far get into housing. So there's, it's families, it's children, it's seniors, it's individuals, single moms. It's a, it's a, it's a pretty big umbrella that falls under that category of homelessness. Basically, it's anybody who doesn't have a home of their own. And so what they do then is they can come into the Father's Heart. We are a day center and they have, we have three, three meals a day. They can come in for breakfast, they can come in for a hot lunch, they can have a sack lunch to go if they're on their way to appointments or, or just the end of the day. They can come in, we have a clothes closet so they can get clothing exchanged, they can have a shower, we have free haircuts. We have two medical teams that come in twice a month that see, attend to their medical needs and the Father's Heart helps with their prescriptions. We help those that want help with any addictions that they may have. We take them into detox and then help them get into recovery programs. Myself, last year, I picked up about 50 off the streets and took them into detox. And we see many of them turned around. Several of them help now in the Father's Heart. One is a part-time receptionist for me and the others come in and they, they help and they volunteer to some capacity. Gives them a sense of belonging, a sense of value, a sense of worth. I talk to them like we're a team. I need your help, let's do this together. So they feel very much a part of what we're doing in the community. And another thing is that we have also had over the years, I've been doing this for 14 years, and we moved in to Oregon City from the Clackamas area. And we had a really good relationship with Clackamas County Police Department there and the probation department and some other areas and that we work together with them. During the winter months, we are a warming center. So because we're also a day center, we operate different than, than the average warming center. In that we are only open in extreme cold if the temperatures are 32 degrees below, or below for more than two nights in a row. Then we're open at night. And we are the largest day center in Clackamas County. We offer computer stations, we train on computers, we help with job resumes in any way that we can. And so that's what we do. And really it's, it's not just a handout like a lot of people think it is, it's a hand up, helping them to understand their value and worth. Many of them have lost that in the cloudiness of their lifestyle. And so we try to help them to gain that back again. And just for your information for, in Oregon City, I don't know if you know what the stats are, but in Oregon City on a given night, the total counted of homeless, and it's very hard to capture all that in one night, but it's about 281 in Oregon City. And 103 of those were female, 84 male, and 94 just didn't get to put their gender on there. And of the, of the age breakdown, the largest number of the homeless are children, between six and 12 and 13 and 17. It's the largest, largest group of homeless in, in Oregon City. And so we're really glad we're here so that we can fill in the gap. And I do know that in Oregon City, in the high school, or in the school, students served in Oregon City School District last school year was 256. So there's quite a number here in Oregon City and a lot of need. And so we're just glad we're here that we can attend to those and help in any way. So when they come into our day center, they're welcomed with open arms by me and my staff. And we see what capacity we can help them and if we can't, then we send them into, we partner with other agencies. And we patrol it very well. We have our teams that go out and, and watch the areas because we're very community oriented. We want to make sure it's safe for everybody. We've never, in all the years I've been doing this, had any real issues. If that were to arise, we will, we'll call the police. We do what we, what we need to do to ensure safety for everybody involved. So we're just glad to be here. Thank you for having us.
I think it might've been a couple of years ago I ran into you. I think it was shortly after I got this office, but indicated I'd like to have the opportunity to bring you. And then it turns out I drive over to my house and there you were, you were just two blocks away from me. And so I dropped in and had a nice conversation with you and spoke to some of your clients as well. And I, I was very pleased to see you actually in the neighborhood.
Well, we're, we're, another thing too, just to bring awareness to comments from police officers in the past and even the probation department is that they're glad we, we operate because it gives a safe place for those that don't have a place, as opposed to them wandering the streets and getting into trouble. So they can come into the day center, they can, they can play games, card games, they can watch TV while they're waiting for shower or laundry or their lunch. They can help us, you know, and a lot of them do. And that keeps them busy is, is what it does. So we're kind of glad to do that as well.
So I, I think it's great. I've known about you guys for years. So my question is the connection between your clientele and jobs. Have you made that bridge? Have you been able to connect into, I don't know, services that can get them into a job?
Yes, actually, we have connections with certain agencies that will call us if they have an opening. Some are just regular businesses that will take them and some are felony friendly and they will, second chance organizations that will take them. And there's not a lot right now.
Right.
But, and we post them and we let, and those that we've gotten to know, we know what their giftings are, we know what their talents are, then we let them know, this sounds like this would be great for you.
Okay, good.
And so we give them that. And so what we do then is we not only give them the information, we'll give them a bus ticket to get to where they go, which we do anyway.
Nice.
Whether it's to important meetings or interviews or, or court dates or whatever it is, we really encourage them to, to be responsible.
Do you partner with Dress for Success too?
Well, we have, only in that some of the clothing that we can't use for our clientele, we just pass on to them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, basically, that's what we do. We have kind of casual dress, and casual is what we, we have in our, in our clothes closet.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
Thank you. Where are you located?
We are located on 12th, the corner of 12th and Washington, where the old, I think the DA was in there and volunteer connections were in there.
Right across from the, where the chamber was before we moved to their current location.
Right on the corner.
Perfect. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Teri. I appreciate you coming out.
You're welcome. Thank you.
With that, we have our time for citizens' comments for items that are not on the agenda. We have a, a three-minute rule that I'm going to start trying to enforce for the next New Year.[552.74][552.74](Laughter). I'm making a New Year's resolution. Anyway, unless, unless Commissioners decide otherwise.
But you're gonna start it now?
No, not me. I'm gonna give you a warning.
Okay.
Get ready, get ready for a stricter mayor.
All right. Thank you for that warning.
Are you gonna cut Santa Claus off?[571.62][571.62](Laughter).
So we have on our list, is it William, Willhite, is that right? Amy Willhite, excuse me, and William Gifford.[583.12][583.12](Laughter). Sorry about that, Amy.
They're setting us to each other.
I want it known, we're not here together.[593.12][593.12](Laughter).
It's obvious that you don't object to being seen with him.
What did they say about keep your friends close?
Yeah, I think you're right there.
Feature's own.[611.12][611.12](Laughter). Okay. I am, my name's Amy Willhite and I, Monday night, was elected to be the secretary-elect for the CIC, Citizen Volvement Council.
Oh, congratulations.
And I am here to bring to your attention a concern that I brought up that night as well as continuing on from then, that I'm concerned that that election was held in violation of our bylaws that I had actually never seen until that night. And I know, I don't believe it was intentional, I believe that there was just, some things were overlooked. If you look at our bylaws, it clearly states that the elections would be held at a different time. They're supposed to be, actually the, in November, there's supposed to be a special meeting that is for that. It's not supposed to be done at a general meeting. The, at the general meeting, you're supposed to call up and have a committee, a nominating committee done. And then the procedure is to have a special meeting, it's on a, our meetings are the first Monday, this is supposed to be the second Tuesday of November is supposed to be. And there, that didn't happen. It was, it was brought up at one of the months, they said, are we just gonna all raise our hands and nominate that night? And we just did. And that, that in itself is a violation because you've just changed the bylaws and there's clearly in the bylaws states how that was supposed to be. Again, unbeknownst, I believe, to the people that were involved. The night of the meeting, we had various new members come. Whether or not they are valid members is a question. Also, we had a vote by proxy that is clearly against our bylaws. We also had a phone-in vote. While that's not addressed in the bylaws, I believe that is because that technology has come into place since the bylaws came into place. And I don't believe that all members were made aware that that would be an option. And so I, myself, in, since that night, I brought it up, like I said, that very night, that some of the things that I had in question. And looking at it further, I see that the chair can call a special meeting and he can do that on his own, or also seven members of the committee can do that, or council, I guess we're a council. It's a C. So I have requested to the chair that he call such a meeting. I will also ask all of the members and try to get seven members if we need to do it that way also, so that it doesn't feel like, you know, something, anything's going wrong. This is just, I feel my election is in question. I was elected, but was I even really elected the right way? So in order to do that, I just felt I needed to bring that up. I will be sending that to the chair. I thought we need to advise you, I needed to let the city manager know that that is an issue. I would request that the special meeting that is held actually be the nomination meeting like, or the nomination committee meeting as a setup in the bylaws and that everyone is notified of that meeting and then the election can happen according to the bylaws again. So I just wanted that, to bring that to the attention, as, when I look on the website, it shows that really, I couldn't find who we, that there's no really governing of the CIC. It's kind of self-governing, it appeared. But it did say that we were, we were to advise the city commission and were to advise the planning commission, so I felt this would be a good place to bring that up and just make you aware.
Thank you very much for that information.
So you were elected secretary?
I was.
Who was elected chair and vice chair?
I was gonna get to that.
Oh, you were gonna do that. Okay.
I have my notes from that night. Larry Hanlon.
I'm glad you were elected.
Yes.
You're the right person we need.
Yes.
And I do believe, someone couldn't believe that I wasn't a little bit scared, not scared, but saying, but, you know, hey, it's easy to take notes.
It's generally the hardest position to find somebody that's willing to take it.
I like to see justice done and I, I believe that the CIC is, should be, it's all about the community. We're not a political, there should be no politics.
Right.
And so let's get back, and any involvement I've ever been on a committee, through work, through other organizations, I'm all about, let's get back to the handbook or the policy procedures manual, or the bylaws, whatever you might be governed by. And so when I saw those last meeting and I started reading through them and I thought, oh, what have we done? Not that the vote will turn out any different, that doesn't matter to me. I don't have any stake in it. I just was concerned of how it was done. So the, the chair that was voted in was Larry Hanlon, I believe he's Caulfield, from Caulfield neighborhood. The vice chair was Steve Anderson from Hillendale and then I was voted in as secretary.
That's great. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Gifford.
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford and I live in Oregon City. I had a couple of things. One, real quickly, is I want to make an announcement to the listening public that the library is offering a special deal through the end of the year. You get half off of all of your fines. So I just saved a big bundle by writing them a check.
You mean, you put it off all year long in order to get this special deal?
Just to get to this point.
Excuse me.[941.12][941.12](Laughter). I didn't say that.
We're keeping a list.
I know.[947.24][947.24](Laughter).
Did they ask for food donations?
Can you stop the clock? Harassment. Oh.[954.12][954.12](Laughter). I also wanted to report on the CIC as the past chair, or the past, past secretary and the, and the agreement was that the offices basically would, the new officers would take office the first meeting in January. So I suppose technically I'm still the secretary. Something that was missing from Monday night was a vote of appreciation for, for Tom Guile, for the, for all the work that all the officers have done for these past few years. We also, we also missed a great opportunity to recap all of the things that the, that the CIC has done in the last few years, especially this last year, insofar as we got the, the emergency preparedness seminars, very well attended, we had two of those. We had, we have reactivated all of the neighborhood associations. We have greatly participated in the National Lights Out. We've had booth presences at the, at the farmer's market. There have been a lot of really good things that have been done with the, with the neighborhood association. I, I understand Amy's concern about the, the letter of the law. When we formed, when we reformed the CIC and are activating the neighborhood association, there's a lot of bootstrapping that, that goes on insofar as just trying to get enough volunteers to show up.
Yes.
And we're still just a bunch of neighbors and it's not a political organization and we, we try to have some general rules. And I suppose we should be more consistent in administering those rules, but I think for the most part, everybody's just trying to do the best they can and get by. And if we get, if we get bylaws cleared up, I think that, that could help some confusion. But I think for the most part, everybody's just doing the best they can and I was, I was pleased with, with the, the way things happened. But I think that there should've been more appreciation extended to, to Tom and to Larry for, for the work that they've done in the last few years. So that's all I wanted to say.
Great. Thank you.
We have Tom Guile to acknowledge his acknowledgement here.
His greatness. His greatness. Greatness.
Good evening, Tom Guile, Chair, I guess still of CIC. I just wanted to acknowledge what Amy just said here, I guess. I guess, it's funny, I worked on the, the bylaws for the neighborhood template, but I've never really completely read in depth the bylaws of the CIC.
I see.
And so I'm a little embarrassed. None of us as officers caught that or K, I don't think it really had been an issue before.
Right.
And there were several things that were brought up to my attention during that meeting, after the meeting, even as I sat there after the elections, Larry had passed over to me the bylaws where it showed there was supposed to be a nominating committee, a nominating meeting. Wasn't even aware of it. It was totally my fault for not having read those and ignorance is no excuse. But as soon as I receive seven emails, as she said, to call a meeting, I'm sure I will after this meeting, I'm gonna send an email to Katie through and to city manager David Fraser to ask to have a meeting as quickly as possible. I believe it has to be from reading those bylaws now within seven, I give everybody seven days notice, so if there's not a meeting on December 17th, because the following Monday is a Christmas Eve and then there's New Year's Eve, I'll try to do one as soon as possible to discuss with the entire membership what needs to take place. There was, there's a lot of things that we need to look at for the elections that never even thought about.
Yeah.
Who's entitled to vote. By different bylaws, I was pointed out that one neighborhood bylaw said that a steering committee needs to approve the person who's gonna be voting at the, at these meetings, the representatives, and that did not take place in a steering committee. So there's various little things like that. This feels like a redo of Park Place a couple of years ago. But no, I'm not bringing it to you because we're not coming to you for permission, I'm just coming, I guess, to acknowledge Amy's request that I will conduct a meeting. You're all invited to attend to see how we do it. If indeed November 17th is the nominating meeting, I will ask the membership if I can stay on until we have the actual voting in January. If that's, if they decide they don't want to vote on that meeting, on whatever night in December it is that we have the meeting, I'll say, okay, I'll stay over. And as soon as they have the elections, then the gavel, Doug's gavel goes immediately to the next person because I should've been ending as of December 31st, but I will stay on to make sure that I correct any oversights.
Yeah, so you'll keep your current board executive, right?
Yes.
And they'll stay on?
Right, that's right.
Yeah.
Larry, and while, while William didn't mention his name, he too was a part of that team and so appreciation. I mean, I started with you, Betty, as my vice chair and William's just carried on taking notes forever.
Yes. He loves it too.
He does. I don't know why he quit it.[1302.74][1302.74](Laughter). Again, I just wanted to confirm that I will follow up with that and, and let you all know that I'll keep you informed and you're invited to see if you want to see how we operate to resolve this situation. Do you any have, any of you have any questions at me at this point?
Will there be refreshments?[1318.24][1318.24](Laughter).
You got it. You got a week's notice, you got the guy to put something, you got it.
That's right. Hot mic rounds.
Well, Tom, I think that you've done good stepping up into that spot. So thank you very much for all the work.
As I said, Monday night, it was enjoyable. It's been a really a learning experience.
Yeah.
We've gone through a lot, citywide, all of you have, and controversies and I, we really need the neighborhood memberships, all of them, to step forward and start attending their meetings.
Absolutely.
And I think that's the drive of the next ones. If they want to participate, part of goal one, they need to come to their own individual meetings and really step up to, we need fresh blood, so to speak, on, on each of those neighborhood meetings, committee meetings. Okay?
Well, and thank your board for us too. I know William Gifford has been really involved and Larry.
Santa Claus.
So thank you guys for doing all your work. We really appreciate it.
Sure, thank you, Betty. You would know you've been there, so thanks. Thank you all very much and wish you all a happy holiday.
You too.
With that, it comes to the citizens' comments for items that, oh, we're still on that. Actually, that's it. We've done that. Thank you. The, that were adoption of the agenda, is there anything, anybody wants to have polled? Commissioner Smith.
Sorry. 8J, just for a couple of questions.
8J? Any others?
8D and 8K.
Eight what?
D and K.
Eight D and 8K. Now, I'm not gonna ask something to be polled, but I think it always helps to have a description of what a non-remunstance agreement is. So maybe during the city's managers' report, if you go ahead and talk about that, we have one of those here. I'm not asking for it to be polled though. And with that?
So it was, just for clarification, it was 8D?
8D, 8J and 8K.
Okay.
And then an explanation of 8G essentially, but not, not to have it polled.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll go into general business and Newell Creek Restoration Project site agreement. And Scott Archer is identified as the person.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. This is a, an agreement that is a partnership and it's between Oregon City, Metro, the Greater Oregon City Watershed and Clackamas County Soil and Water Conservation District. And it pertains to some work that will be done in the Newell Creek Canyon natural area. And there are going to be over 270 acres of, of property will be affected by this project, of which about 40 acres is the city's property, which is why we're part of the partnership. And what the, the purpose is, is for things such as restoration of native riparian vegetation and treatment of invasive species and things of this nature, with the, the purpose of developing restoration of water quality, fish habitat, improving aquatic health in the Newell Creek and, and just generally kind of helping to maintain that large area. So this is a, a project that's been brought to us as part of a partnership. The, the Greater Oregon City Watershed has secured about $54,000 in grants to perform this work. No funding has been asked of the city. We're just simply giving permission to allow these, this work to be done. I do need to note to you, there's a slight modification in our agreement from the one that was put in the original staff report. The new updated agreement is on your monitor. And what we've done if, is in the old, the, the previous agreement, we've, we've removed section 4.8, was mistakenly put in that the city was gonna provide $5,000 in funding. And as I just told you, we're not, we're not funding any of this project. That was inadvertently put in there through some discussions that were confused with another project, basically. And so there's an updated agreement that's, should be on your, on your monitors at your dais. The, the work is gonna begin very soon, if approved, and will run, the, the work will run through this next spring and then there'll be a maintenance program for a couple of years after that. And so this is a good thing and it's a positive, a positive partnership and it's a really good deal for the city because we're not funding it and, and getting a lot of benefit. So I would recommend your support and, and just ask that you approve the agreement and allow staff to sign that.
Scott, may I ask a question? On, down there on Newell Creek Drive, you know, there's all those lots that didn't ever get developed across the, on the, what is that, the east side of the street?
Okay.
And, but they all have like electrical boxes. Are those gonna come out there and?
I would have to look into that. I'm not, I'm not sure. You don't happen to know anything about that, do you, Tony? Okay. We'll probably need to look into that and we could, we could follow up with you on that.
Okay.
I'm not sure what the exact status of that is.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? I would just comment that, that, well, the chair, the chair of the Greater Oregon City Watershed Council was in today, but could not, could not remain for the meeting. I'm the vice chair. And we've been looking for this opportunity for some time and we have this tremendous metro partnership. And this, this really deals with only a small portion of restoration activities that have to occur in that particular area, but it's a great first step. And we appreciate the involvement of both Metro and the city's commitment to let us work in properties adjacent. Most of those properties and, and most of those properties, they're either the lower part of the cemetery area that will not be used for grave sites. It's a area that's lower and this actually has several wetlands in it. And also lands that were dedicated to the city by developers where they could not build because of the steep slopes. I think that's probably virtually all of the lands that the city owns.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. And that will go on into...
Do we need to have a motion or anything?
Is this for?
Yeah, it requires approval.
Yes, yes. So do I hear a motion?
Move to approve Newell Creek Restoration Project site agreement.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Local voice.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
That motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we're in the consent agenda. We'll go ahead and pass the consent agenda with the exceptions of 8D, 8J and 8K. eight K. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Hold on. Roll call?
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
We'll go ahead in the order, eight D first.
Mayor, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Before we get to that, I just want to offer up a suggestion for the commission because I know some of you don't actually get a chance to recognize items you want to poll till tonight. So I do understand that. But if, in the future, if any of you see an item that you think you might want to poll, if you can let us know beforehand and we can answer your question beforehand, there might be fewer things we have to pull off and then make a little bit more use of your time. So just if you happen to have the time to do that. Thanks.
Okay. Eight D, election results for November 6, 2012, general elections as certified by Clackamas County Clerk for City Commission's Position Number Two and Three, invalid measures 3407, 316, 317, 318, and 319.
I just wondered if we could get clarification on which each of those were?
Okay. I bet we all know what some of them are.
The annexations.
Position two and three.
The annexations.
Do you have a problem with those?
Measure 3407, that was of course the...
I can, yes, it'll take me a moment to look it up. But I do, of course, we all know that 3407 was the urban renewal bonds. The annexation, the remainder of the measures are annexations and the acreage is listed there.
Okay.
Is there something more specific that you want than that?
No, that's what I wanted because I didn't remember about those other, I didn't remember that there were four annexations.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Just so everybody remembers, all these measures passed.
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
With that, we will go ahead and...
We'll need a vote for that, though.
Okay, that's right. Do you want to put the...
I'll move to approve eight D.
Okay. Commissioner Roth?
Second.
And then Betty Mum, seconds.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Next item, eight J, contract amendment for Agricultural Research Group, ARG, Irma Tinger House Architectural and Engineering Documents.
Not so much any concern or questions. I just actually wanted a brief, really brief update. We obviously already approved the expenditures except for the $3,000 and change or whatever that's added to it. I guess I just want to know the next step in the process for the House. Once we subtract this expense from our budget, do we have the resources to go to the next step? And if not, how much do we need to carry on? And I know to some degree that's probably not completely known at this point. And I know we were shooting for, you know, between $500,000 and $600,000 and we're somewhere at $400,000, so minus the 70. What is that, what is our next step? What is the money that we have get us? And do we still need to be looking for more funds? Or are we confident with where we're at?
Yeah, really good questions, actually. So we have in the, you know, we now have a dedicated fund just for the Irma Tinger renovation project. And in that fund, I believe we have, I believe we have $410,000 accumulated to date. And this was just a minor contract amendment that went over our purchasing threshold at staff level. That's why we brought it to you. But the architect and engineering process is nearly complete. This is actually just a last little piece. And within the next few weeks, we're going to basically have a set of architectural specifications. Recall, we did somewhat recently, the architect came and gave you a pretty good review of where we're at and what was going on. And the next steps then would be, well, part of that is, part of that is that we will receive a final cost estimate once the plans are done. And you really have to have a full set of plans before you can do your final cost estimate calculation. And that will really be, that's kind of the magic number then that's going to be revised. The number we were looking at before was actually more around $700,000, but we were kind of hoping that that would, that number would come down a bit. And it may. But once the A and E, the architect and engineering process is completed, we'll have a full set of specifications. That will be our bid document to go out for bid for construction. But we'll also have a full cost estimate that will give us that magic number. So then going forward with the last part of your question, Commissioner, was that no, we're not done, we're not done with the funding yet. I think a couple of things on that. One is that in the upcoming budget process, we'll probably be visiting this in terms of what, if any of the city wants to continue to put for another year. And then there are additional grants that we're looking at. There's one in particular that we feel we have a strong case to make. That is the Meyer Memorial Trust Fund. And we were waiting until we were closer to being done with our specifications to put in for that one. That was, the timing was such that we were, it was told us that we'd be better off waiting until we basically were done with our architect's work and then apply for that. So we're going to be working on that in the coming few months. And then, you know, any other funding opportunities that are out there. But no, I don't want to, I definitely don't want to miss the point. We're not, we're not fully funded for the project yet. We are a long ways towards that, though. So we have some decisions to make about that.
Okay. Has our connection with City of Portland, is that still ongoing? Or did we lose contact with them after we were told we're not getting any money?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I had gotten an email earlier that it was not funded.
Right. I just mean in terms of, we have had a partnership with staff at least, kind of collaborating, but I don't know.
I think we should try to strive and maybe in our goal session to, we're going to have different elected officials there.
Yes.
And what we need to do is do it in a process that's consistent with their budget cycle, too. Because there was no line item for that and I'm sure as things went on into their budget year, it was probably not possible to do that. I think if we go on very, and I actually got this as an item on the goal session, but in general, the Irma Tinger, but I think one of the things is it might be to our benefit to go ahead and approach the City of Portland earlier on and enable them to incorporate this actually into their actual budget. And I think that'll make a lot of difference, if they should choose to do so. But I think that might have been one of the issues.
I think just that, a reminder to the staff at Portland that we've connected with that we're not done with this question and that we, just to drop the hint that we hope to meet with the new mayor at some point.
I was informed there might be a possibility of some document that indicated that Lovejoy actually won the coin toss and we'll have to request that the city change its name.
Can you stop this? Thank you, Scott.
Yes, you're welcome.
With that, oh, yeah, we'll need a motion now again.
Oh, move to approve item eight J. I'm not sure what it's called. Where am I at?
Contract amendment.
Contracts amendment to the personal services agreement with, oh, no, wrong one.
Wrong one.
Contract agreement for ARG, Irma Tinger House.
Very good.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Mum.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
And then the other polled item, this is amendment to the personal services agreement with Delorito Architects LLC, in any case.
And I was just wondering on this one, since it's gone over the $50,000 staff approval, is there going to be additional money going on to this or are we...
I think I've incorporated, when I worked with them on the scope, we did incorporate if the additional work needed, we may have to do some more graphic work and that's been incorporated in this. So we're expecting that this should, this will not come back before you again.
Okay. Thank you. So I move to approve eight K.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Roth and seconded by Commission President Rocky Smith. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
With that, we come to the point of communications. Okay. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last commission meeting, I believe, Mayor, you had requested that staff research whether other taxing districts in Oregon City had any plans for ballot measures, money measures on the May ballot. We've checked with OC School District, Clackamas County, Clackamas Fire, and Clackamas Community College and all of those for the May election, or no.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Well, it's not necessarily good because you probably have to spend more money to get it on the ballot.
Yeah, but, you know.
Well, that's true.
Maybe they'll have the yes thing, no not.
Well, it's good to have minimal competition in a situation like that. Also, I know many of you realize that our staff and I are engaged in professional activities that are related to our jobs in other areas in the city. And recently, Scott Archer got a certificate here that we're very proud of. This is a thank you for his service to the National Parks and Recreation Association Administrators Network leadership for between 2010 and 2012. So Scott, thank you very much for that.
Congratulations, Scott.
And then John Lewis is going to give us an update on the STIP process and he'll probably even explain what STIP stands for.
Are you really going to put me on the spot?
State Transportation Implement...
Program. I thought it was...
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right.
Improvement program.
Mm-hmm. Improvement program.
It's a lot of money, basically, is what it is. It's state-funded money. It's, so the city applied for two grant applications here recently. It's actually federally, Federal Highway Administration funding that is administered through the state. And we're applying for projects for the 2016, 17, and 18-year funding cycle. And this is a new, well, they've given away funds before to applicants, but this year they've kind of pooled all the funding into one application process, which helps for the applicant. I'm not quite sure ODOT even yet has figured out how they're going to make all that work because before they would have like bike ped funding and then transportation funding and what they call enhancement funding and fix-it funding. They've kind of pooled all that into one pot and they're going to dole out that money based on all the applications that they received. So for us, we put together two applications. One, the big one, was for Malala Avenue. So we'd be doing improvements similar to what we've done on the rest of, on other parts of Malala Avenue for a section between Beaver Creek Road and Highway 213. So those areas in that stretch of Malala that have not already been improved through development, they would see improvements. We're also, so we would see, you know, what I consider channelization, maybe some medians, maybe some access management, clean up some of the driveway approaches, provisions of sidewalks, wider sidewalks. We've got quite a bit of right-of-way there, so we're hoping to keep our work within that right-of-way. There may be a couple of exceptions to that where we need a little more right-of-way, but so anyway, that's a pretty significant project. It would include new signalization at Claremont and new signalization at Gaffney, ADA improvements, stormwater treatment, mid-block pedestrian crossings, those flashing signals that are pedestrian-activated, you know, striping for bikes and multimodal options for all those. So, street trees, street lighting, big projects. So that's a 6.6, a little more than 6.6 million dollar project. And we proposed a grant, a match of 1.8 million dollars, so, or about 1.8 million dollars. So that was one project. The other one is five blocks of Main Street between 10th and 15th and be a bit of a repeat of what we did on the five blocks between 5th and 10th. So carrying those improvements further north on Main Street and street lighting, sidewalk replacements, ADA improvements, those types of improvements. And that was a 3 million, $359,000 project and matches at 11.28%, which is $356,432. So those are two projects that we submitted on. And we heard, today we inquired to find out what the competition looked like. And they're still kind of mulling through all that, but there's 98 applications. For the type of project we're looking at, they're both considered enhance-it projects and the state is planning to give away 65 million over the complete three-year period. So there's not a lot of money there. And the competition will, I'm sure, be steep. And they've got a very, I was looking at their schedule for award and if I'm reading this correctly, they really don't plan to have that final list. My sense is we'll probably get a preview and know well in advance of this whether or not we've been selected or not. But February of 2015 is when they end the process, when that final stamp is placed on their approved list. So it's not, it's not going to come around right away, but let's keep, you've got to keep your fingers crossed for some time, it sounds like. So those are two projects. I didn't bring the grant name, and I probably should have, but I just quickly grabbed, we were awarded a, another, it's a state grant, I think it's a transportation enhancement grant is what this one is, for Holcomb Boulevard. We announced that a while back. And so it's the whole, the section of Holcomb Boulevard mostly. It would be above the grade school driveway there or north of the grade school driveway. And there's a little piece south of the grade school driveway as well. But we're looking at, we've been selected on 100, we've been selected for the next round of further consideration. And I believe there's still 60 projects that are kind of in the works on that one and they can't award them all. But it's a new opportunity for us to better define what the project really consists of. We, in the first round, we suggested we'd have a $500,000 project, 500 or less. We're seeing that project being a little bit more, but we're still going to go ahead and pursue that project. So that application is due on, I believe it's the 13th of this month. So that's coming as well. So that's, that's it.
Thank you, John. And lastly, we wanted our finance director to give us a brief summary of our position with respect to PERS.
Thank you, David Wyatt Parno, Finance Director for Oregon City, Mayor Neely and commission members. PERS recently, public employees retirement system, but unlike TIP, probably everybody knows what PERS means. PERS recently issued the new rates that will become effective in July of 2013. And there's been a lot of media coverage because agencies are facing increases that could potentially reduce operations provided by schools and public agencies. And so it's been in the news quite a bit. And I'd like to briefly discuss two questions. First, what will be the impact Oregon City of the July rate increases? And second, what are the long-term impacts of PERS to Oregon City and our ability to provide services? To the question of July's rate increase, Oregon City's in a much better position than most agencies that are similar because of some wise decisions that the city leaders have made in the past several years. In 2005, the city issued pension bonds to save money and reduce rates. Several other jurisdictions participated in that as well. But what Oregon City did that was a little bit unique is we continued to charge, even though rates went down when we issued the bonds, we continued to internally charge ourselves the same rate and set aside the difference in a reserve fund. And we call that the PERS Rate Differential Fund. So we use that fund to make the debt service payments, but it also serves as a little bit of a rainy day reserve fund. In July, the PERS rates for Oregon City will increase an average of about 5.2% of payroll. And at that time, we'll, yeah, we'll have accumulated 1.5 million dollars in the PERS Rate Differential Fund. So the city manager and I have discussed drawing down those funds a little bit and including only a 2.6% increase in the PERS charges for the next two years. And at the end of those two years, we would still have 1,200,000 in the reserves. That's something we can discuss during the budget process. So the city's history of fiscal responsibilities places us in a relatively good position in the near term. The second question about the long-term... The second question about the long-term impact of PERS is kind of harder to address. To provide some context, a lot of personal retirement plans, like 401Ks and IRAs, are defined contribution plans, which means that you basically, retirees get out of it what they put into it over the years, plus interest.
Right.
PERS is a defined benefit plan, which means that it guarantees a certain benefit to retirees irrespective of what investment returns are. As with all retirement systems, PERS was severely impacted by the market downturn, beginning in 2008. In 2007, PERS was fully funded. In 2008, the system lost 27% of its assets, which is about $20 billion. So, and poor market, we've recovered about half of that in the market, but it's hard to make up those losses. So, poor-market earnings have been insufficient to support PERS commitments. It's possible that in the future, investment earnings would reduce the overall liability, but that's not really expected in the near term. You kind of think about your projections for the economy and what you're expecting for your own market. In 1996 and 2003, significant reforms were made to the PERS systems. So, any new employees entering the system don't have the same earnings guarantee as the first-tier retirees, but it's going to take some time for all of those first-tier retirees to work their way through the system. So, in the meantime, we're kind of on the hook to pay them. And there's been a call, I think you've seen probably Ted Wheeler in the Treasurer's Office in Portland, and there's been a lot of call for reforms and some adjustments to actuarial assumptions that could reduce contribution rates as well. I don't think we have a direct impact on that, but certainly you can advocate for that either way that you see. And in the meantime, I want to assure you that the city will continue to strategically plan and to act in a fiscally responsible manner. So, if you have any questions, I could get more detail.
We might want to have the discussion for the goal-setting session, maybe, when we come to the budget discussions.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
At the goal-setting session, we may want to talk about that later.
Well, what we're hoping to do is, when we exit the goal-setting, we will have a pretty good idea of what the goals are going to be, and then we will start developing the budget, meaning that we will look and see what the available resources are, and we'll target those to what your goals are. And if some of that requires us to look at suggesting expenditures from the PERS differential fund, we'll bring that back to you in the budget process.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think Tony Conkle also had something to leave.
Yeah, thank you. Just wanted to provide an update on the South End Concept Plan, and let everyone know, and the public know, that on Thursday, December 13th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at the McLaughlin Elementary School, which is a 19230 South End Road, we'll be holding a South End Concept Plan Open House. All ages are welcome, refreshments will be provided. Staff will be providing a short overview of the project at 6:15, hopefully to inspire some conversation, and get some of the community's thoughts and ideas out at that open house. So, if there's, also on that night, we'll be launching the interactive forum available on the project website, which is at www.southendconceptplan.org.
Can you give us the date again?
It is Thursday, December 13th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at the McLaughlin Elementary School.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the last thing, in the commission's current goals for this year was a requirement that, or a request, that we, that the city appointed a committee to consider whether or not some changes should be made to the charter. And that committee consisted of two commissioners and a couple of members of our staff, including myself. And so, the two commissioners were Commissioner Mum and Commissioner Roth, and both of them met with Nancy Iden and I last week to talk about the charter, the idea, and actually Kathy had a number of suggestions, and many of them were less substantive and more just general cleanup of language and things that are sort of archaic when you look at them. And so, we got together and discussed it, and there was some consensus among all of us, and I'll leave that to the commissioners if they'd like to report on that. That's all I have, Your Honor.
I have nothing reported, and I pointed to a couple of committees, but they don't have anything really to do with Oregon City business. Committee's associated with Metro, but dealing with certain issues. With that, anybody else wish to speak? And I see Mr. Snapp.
All right. I signed up.
Yes, you did.
Aren't you the cool one?
We all followed you.
Okay, I have a list, but it's not a huge list of some things I want to talk about. One, a week and a half ago, at McLaughlin School, I was invited to go talk to the Girl Scouts, and so the Girl Scout troop that meets at McLaughlin, I have a friend of mine who, whose daughter is part of that group, and they were working towards a government patch. And so, they wanted me to come and talk about the city, and they had a lot of amazing questions. And after I committed to that, like, before I'd actually done it, they said, "Oh, we're also working on our drawing patch." So, we had a drawing lesson, and it was a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun. So, I appreciate that they had really good cupcakes, and-
That's the important part.
Yes. The only thing I found odd by it is they meet in the same room as the Boy Scouts at the same time, and I thought, is that kind of, because the Girl Scouts were doing their pledge, and the boys were kind of glaring at them, you know? It was interesting. So, I don't know if that's, you know, a dilemma to, it was very cool. They had a lot of fun and a lot of really great questions. The other thing I wanted to say is, we'll talk about this at the commission level at some point, I just wanted to mention that, so it's not a surprise, that we've had two meetings with CHP regarding the End of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center buildings, just to discuss some concerns about the structures of the buildings, which is not really anything new to us, but at some point, that will affect how we, as a commission, decide to move forward with those buildings. And so, I think we're going to, we're setting up two more meetings, I think, and I think at some point, we'll, either during the goal session, we'll probably, we'll just address part of that during that part of that time, so just want to let you know about that. The high school, as you know, Oregon City High School has a rivalry. I don't know if you knew that. There's a school across the river.
Gladstone?
Not Gladstone. They're not really in our same, you know?
They're not the same.
They're not at the same level, you know? They're-
Smaller.
The, we all know that the Oregon City-Westland rivalry is one of the oldest, if not the oldest, on the west coast of the United States. But the question being asked by USA Today is, what is the biggest rivalry in the United States? And so, several weeks ago, USA Today contacted high schools all across the United States, Oregon City and Westland included, and to talk about rivalries. And what happened from that was, USA Today created a contest that's actually been going for several weeks. The first stage of the contest was at the state level, and so every, all of the 50 states and Washington, and Washington, D.C., were eligible to vote for the three or four top rivalries in their state. And so, the voting was open for two weeks, and Oregon City and Westland, of course, with not too much of a surprise, won at the state level. So, we can now say we're the biggest rivalry, the biggest rivalry in the state. Now, we are competing with 13 other rivalries for the west coast of the United States. The voting started today, and you have six days from now, you have until the 12th of December, to vote for Oregon City and Westland's rivalry at the regional level. The great thing-
And how do we vote?
Well, I don't have the website for USA Today, but there's a link from our high school website. If you search, if you search, you know, if you look up USA Today and the rivalry, I'm sure you'd find it, but if you go to Oregon City High School's website, which is ochs.org city, O-R-E, city, dot K-12, dot O-R, dot U-S, or just Google Oregon City High School.
Yeah. I would do that.
Go to-
Oregon City High School, got it.
Go to Oregon City High School website. On the top of the website, there's a thing that says "Vote Here," and you can click, and it takes you to the USA Today website. So, the great thing about this, if you're retired, or you're at home, and you don't have anything to do, not that retired people don't, I have been voting, I think I've probably voted 1,000 times. You can vote as many times as you want.
Oh, really?
All day long, all night, and you have to tell December 12th to vote. If we win that, then we, of course, go to the national-level competition, and that's a whole nother week of voting. So, definitely tell everyone, if you can, email all your friends and contacts to vote. Thankfully, Westland is on our side this time, and so we're working together. The other thing I wanted to say was, the 12th, 13th, 14th, and 15th, December 12th, 13th, 14th, 15th, is the winter play at the high school, which is called The Homecoming. It's every night of those four nights at 7:30, and the play's called The Homecoming, and that's actually the play that was the basis for the TV show The Waltons. It's a great holiday story, and I would encourage people to attend that next weekend.
And where do you get tickets for that?
Tickets right at the box office at the high school, and usually, we start selling tickets about 6:45, 7 o'clock. And then, again, school's out on the 21st of December.
Commissioner Mum.
I was able to attend the Christmas tree lighting on Main Street. It was great. The mayor was there, did a little spiel. I can say spiel because I couldn't hear what he said. The sound system wasn't all that great, but I know he would have done us justice. Commissioner Roth and I did attend this meeting that David Fraser was referring to regarding the charter, and kind of how to do a cleanup thing, and I think it was consensus in the room that we are going to wait until the water rate rollback has been passed.
Or not.
Passed. It will be passed, and then, and then we'll come back and revisit the kind of general cleanup, so it's something we're still working on. That's all I have.
The thing is, we might run that thing by about the next 10 years, trying to get it passed, and we won't have the charter amended in the meantime.
Oh, my gosh.
It will pass.
It will pass.
It will pass.
It will pass. Commissioner Polly.
Yes, I have been enjoying the new enhancements to the city, especially the Oregon City Bridge, and coming across that and seeing spectacular Singer Creek Falls lit up. That is a sight to behold.
That's great.
And the second thing, I, along with Commissioner Roth, attended the South End Neighborhood Meeting, and it was so greatly attended that they had to keep bringing in chairs, and I thought that was-
That was Hazel Grove, wasn't it?
Oh, excuse me, Hazel Grove.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. But it was, it was a good, you know, inspiration to see all the attendees and what the neighborhood meetings can be, because I've been to many that were sparsely attended. So, that was very encouraging to see that, and it was a great meeting with the water rate rollback presentation. So, thank you to all the city presentations that go on at those neighborhood meetings to connect citizens and give out information. So, that is fantastic. And the last thing is, I want to encourage everybody to attend the next work session with the Main Street Board. That would be good. We can get some questions answered, and really see what's going on down there at Main Street, so.
When is that?
That is next Tuesday. It's here. It's our work session. It's our work session.
Oh.
You'll probably be there.
You will be here.
I was going to go somewhere else and attend this thing.
Commissioner Polly.
Okay, I have a couple things. The 12th, David and I will be doing the conversation with the commissioners at the River Show Hotel, and we've been getting a lot of these out. In fact, this time, I've invited the civics and political classes from the college and from the high school to attend, so hopefully, we can get some young ideas and some fresh ideas coming to this, too. But if anybody wants any of these, I have just a few of them left to hand out to people. And then, in November, I attended a two-day workshop on forming neighborhood watch groups put on by the National Sheriff's Association and the Department of Justice, and obtained from that neighborhood watch packets for every neighborhood. And I haven't told Mike this yet, but I would like to coordinate with the liaison people that you're putting into each neighborhood to start these presentations and to get these out to the neighborhoods, because I don't want to just pass them out. I want to go and do a presentation myself, and then also bring in your liaison officer, because that one worked so well at Hazel Grove. They were really appreciative of having that officer there. So, I think that would be a good way to introduce it. Okay? Thank you.
I'm going to come back in, because when Commissioner Polly had mentioned the Arch Bridge, it was something I was going to make a request on. There are small concrete structures near the arches that extend out into the road itself, and since they all have the same concrete look as the rest of the bridge, I think there's a possibility that somebody might hit them with their tires or something. I don't know.
They used to be black or something, didn't they?
Yeah. I was wondering if a reflector can be put on those. You'll probably have to go back and look at what I'm talking about. When you're looking at it, you'll see it. They're small concrete structures extending the road. I presume they're for structural purposes, but-
You mean the bumpers?
Yeah, I guess that's what they are.
Yeah, it's the bumpers.
They're actually not concrete, but they're-
They're not, well, they're difficult to see in any case, and maybe there's something that ODOT could do.
We can ask ODOT.
Yeah. Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order?
Executive.
We're going to be, we're going to be exiting into an executive session. Do we have the letters? Oh, oh, before I do that, I do have another announcement. Thank you. We, although the, although the, well, the deadline is the 5th, which is tomorrow, for openings to various of our committees, and we have some positions in excess of the applicants, so I'm going to announce those at this time. The Oregon City Civic Improvement Trust has one opening, and we have insufficient number of applicants for that. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, three openings. The Transportation Advisory Committee, three openings, and the Library Board, one opening. At least one of these is going to be coming forward with a meeting in which we're going to make decisions, and that's the Library Board, but we still have one opening. And yes?
Today is the 5th.
Well, today is the 5th, that's right. So, you've got about four hours. Well, of course, we'll be looking, we'll be looking for applicants for those positions.
Is there someone sitting out there at the desk?
But in any case, you can come forward and just indicate that you're interested. You'd have to fill in a form. Since there are openings that do exist, we'll be continuing trying to fill those. So, if you can get those applications prior to our selection process, which will occur at the respective board meetings, please do so. Again, I'll repeat them, Oregon City Civic Improvement Trust, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, Transportation Advisory Committee, and Library Board. And you can get, you can get the applications at the Recorder's Office, but I presume they're also online?
They are, yes.
Yeah. Hearing none? Go ahead, and our city attorney will read off what the executive session covers.
Yes, three items, 192, 660, 2A Personnel, 2E Real Property Transaction Discussions, and 2H Litigation Filed or Likely To Be Filed.
And we will not be reconvening after that, so give me a hold.